Good evening, everyone. Welcome. This is On Sound City Council. It's a special meeting. It is April 27th. As most of you know, we met down the hall, starting at 6:30 tonight, to receive a legal opinion on what our options are. Obviously, everyone knows this is about the closing of a school in town, and that's why you are all here. Right off the bat, I want to thank everyone for their involvement and for their spirit in our community. In five and a half years, I remember a few years ago, having a bit of correspondence on Lord's Prayer that wouldn't have come within 20 percent of the correspondence that all of us have received in this issue in the last couple of days. We have received a lot of correspondence, obviously, in favor of keeping the schools open. We have to acknowledge that we've received a lot of very informed and thoughtful correspondence, not a lot, but some that agree with the decision that has been made and believe that that is fair. So we've got correspondence from people giving all kinds of different opinions. This is obviously an emotional issue for our community. It's obviously an important issue for our community. I just want to point out that council was not able to respond to every email that came in. We got a lot of emails. I picked and chose ones here and there that I wanted to respond to. I think councillors tried to get to some, but it was very difficult to get to all of them. We, as councillors, are voices of the people, and we're also trustees, required to act in the best interest of our community as a whole. We have to make decisions that are rational, as dispassionate as possible. Sometimes, we're going to make decisions that some people don't like. In fact, always, we make decisions that some people don't like. Sometimes, perhaps, we'll make decisions that no one likes, but we still believe they're in the best interest of the community and need to be made. I know that this council has fussed over this and worried about it and thought about it, and there's been some sleepless nights, and all of us have done our best to think through the entire issues. And behalf of me and behalf of citizens, frankly, I want to thank all the councillors and staff that have put in an effort to deal with this. So if I can move along, we're declaring that we're in a regular meeting. I'm asking, is there any disclosure or pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof from any councillors? Seeing none, thank you. We have deputations planned. There is one that's on the agenda already. I seek council's consent if we can add Peter Reeser from the Chamber of Commerce. Anybody opposed to that? If you're all in favor of that, good. Thank you. I'm asking speakers to try and limit it to 10 minutes. I've gotten in trouble in the past for letting people go too long, and we're going to get hot in here pretty quickly with the number of people. So if I may start with Mitch Hendry, Committee for the Preservation of OSVII Grade 12. There he is.
Am I on mic here? Okay. Firstly, good evening, and thank you, your worship and members of council, for having me and allowing me to speak this evening. As you heard, my name is Mitch Hendry, and I will be speaking, I speak for the students of OSVII. I understand we are all familiar with both the accommodation review process and with the widespread dissatisfaction with both the process itself and the decision that has come about as a result of that process. I'm here to provide a student perspective. At the end of 2015, when the accommodation review was just getting started, surveys were conducted to learn about the students' stance on the issue. A few interesting things were learned from these surveys, however, none were taken into consideration in the staff reports. As could be expected, 79 percent of OSVII students were in favor of amalgamation at the OSVII site. This option was barely discussed because the board claimed they would never get ministry funding for an addition onto OSVII. 69 percent of OSVII students were in favor of or felt neutral towards the notion of having OSVII converted to a 7 to 12 school. Only 7 percent of OSVII students were in favor of amalgamation on the site of West Hill. Somehow, the option that the least students favored was deemed the best option for those students. On March 1st, the board publicized its preliminary staff report suggesting amalgamation at West Hill, and people wanted to talk. Unfortunately, the public had only eight days to prepare presentations for a special board meeting before their March 9 deadline for a recommendation that changes the scholastic climate of Owen Sound so profoundly. Eight days is a very short period. We, the students, wanted to be included in the discussion. We wanted to be convinced that amalgamation on the site of West Hill would be good for us. Unfortunately, we were hardly spoken to, let alone convinced. To summarize, the students of OSVII feel as though our input has been all but completely ignored on a decision that was made on our behalf. In light of this feeling, and with the speed with which the recommendation was ushered to approval, we are pursuing an appeal of the motion. In order to do this, we need signatures equal in number to one-third of the OSVII student headcount. These signatures need to be from parents of currently enrolled OSVII students, or from people who participated in the accommodation review process. We also need to highlight the Blue Water District School Board's documents and articulate where we felt policy was not followed. We have 23 days left to make this appeal. However, option sheets for students that are slotted to be at the West Hill site next year have already been handed out and are to be returned by this Friday. Although we disagree with the decision that was made, we understand that the Blue Water District School Board was put in an impossible position by provincial funding guidelines. At the heart of their difficulty was the usage-based funding model for schools in Ontario. It has been said before and should be said again. What works in Toronto does not work everywhere. In conclusion, we have a question and a request of council. Firstly, does the city have any resources or venues that we could use to further the appeal process? Secondly, could council make it known to the Ministry of Education that the province's usage-based funding model is ill-suited to small communities such as Owen Sound? Thank you.
Thank you. Well done. Two requests. Facilities?
We're looking for, does the city have any resources or venues that we could use to further the appeal process?
And what are you looking for there?
We're looking, basically, we're going to need, like, we want to hold an evening signing.
Meeting?
Meeting?
Meeting to sign up?
Yeah.
Meeting, okay. Good. Okay. Any other questions? I just wanted to clarify that so we understood it. Other questions? Seeing none. Thank you. Well done. Next, Mr. Reeser from the Chamber of Commerce. Peter?
Your worship and city council, thank you very much for the opportunity. As the voice of nearly 450 members of the local business community, the mission of the Owen Sound District Chamber of Commerce is to develop and support a prosperous community through advocacy and leadership that promotes a healthy economic and social environment. Many of the educational elements of the recent decision by the Blue Water District School Board to rationalize public elementary and secondary schools in Owen Sound are beyond our mission. But some key elements are directly relevant to our mandate and expertise, and from what we have seen, or frankly, not seen, they are concerning to the chamber and its members. The Blue Water District School Board is entrusted with not only making educational, informed educational decisions in the best interest of the students and parents that they serve, but they also must make sound and rational business decisions. After all, it's not their money they're spending. It's the taxpayers. As business leaders, our members approach investment and reorganization decisions in an open, fact-based, and orderly way. Value-for-money calculations are essential in such processes. In our view, that is how the city of Owen Sound is conducting its internal restructuring, and we commend you for that. However, such a disciplined analysis and focus appears to be starkly and disturbingly absent from the Blue Water School Board's decisions. If appropriate vigor or rigor was involved, it has been poorly communicated, if at all, to the students, the family, the business, the city, and ultimately, local taxpayers. In making the decision, did the school board take into account that many related costs, of the many related costs that the city of Owen Sound and Gray County will likely incur, and the tax hikes that may need to be implemented? Did it identify and factor in the clear social costs, their impact, and other remediations? Did it conduct any kind of money, of value-for-money calculations? If not, why not? These are all key ingredients of making an informed business decision. If they did do this essential work, then it's incumbent on the board to share the results. Because frankly, we don't understand how the decision makes business sense. It's no secret that these are challenging economic and social times. Hard decisions with real consequences are taken by individuals, families, and businesses every day. Government agencies are not immune from this reality. Indeed, as taxpayer-funded entities, these agencies have an added obligation to exercise a high level of due diligence, professionalism, and transparency. Doing so builds the trust that is inherent in delegated authority like our school board. We believe that the Blue Water District School Board has not yet earned that trust. Thank you.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Reeser? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, we're down to other business, which is the accommodation review. Again, same topic that we know, but we're moving down on the agenda. We received a legal opinion on what we could do. I think we asked for it last Thursday, and it was rushed, and we received it about 5 o'clock this afternoon in written form, and were just provided with it at 6:30. Counsel, what do you want to do with it? Counsel McManaman?
Thank you, worship. I'll move that we release the legal opinion publicly, and since Mr. Elston is here, perhaps ask him to speak on that legal opinion.
Okay. Any comments to that motion? All in favor that is carried? Thank you. Mr. Elston, would you provide us with the details of your opinion?
Thank you. Good evening, your worship, members of council. So I have been following this, of course, but I've immersed myself, and it was actually Friday morning, Friday afternoon, when I came up and met with your staff. And so I've spent better part of the weekend and a lot of this week reviewing the minutes of the meetings, letters that were written, resolutions from your council, to the point that I felt I had a pretty good grasp on how this unfolded and how it's supposed to unfold. And I'll just, maybe just sort of jump to the punchline here, is I don't think there is a basis for a review. And the starting point, I guess, for that is to understand that for all the responsibilities and obligations that you as a municipality have, education is not one of them. And you're a creature of statute, and you only operate and have exercised the authority that's been assigned to you under the municipal act, whereas the Education Act sets up a completely different governance structure. So it's the Minister of Education who makes the rules, and it's your local school trustees, that board, that makes these decisions. And so for me, that's the starting point, and I think, and I'm quite sympathetic to everybody in this room. I have friends who have children in some of the schools that are being closed, and so I know how hard this has been on the community. But just for everybody's benefit, I like to sort of qualify that, that there's only so much the municipality can do. And that's just a statutory, that's the regime that was set up a long time ago. So what the minister, the power to do these reviews comes from a paragraph in the Education Act which says, "The minister can make guidelines saying how accommodation reviews and school closings should go, how they should be undertaken." And so there's a brand-new March 2015 guideline from the minister, and it's called the Pupil Accommodation Review Guideline, and I'm sure lots of people in the room this evening have read that and read it and read it. But that's what sort of governs this whole process. And it says a lot of things. It talks about community consultation. It talks about valuing schools, valuing the board, the students themselves. But the bottom line from the guideline is, it is the sole responsibility of the trustees to decide on school closings. And that is kind of repeated through the guideline. So on the one hand, they're talking about an open consultative process, but at the same time, they make it very clear that the final decision is with the school boards, with the trustees. So that's really all I had to say about that. The, well, I guess the last thing I would say about it is that they're quite clear that you have to make your submissions and do things in a pretty quick march, before the final public meeting, which in this case was February. All submissions and everything had to be in, at least that's the way it was set up in their policy. The board does have a policy. Again, I'm sure everybody here is familiar with BP 3101-D. That's their accommodation review policy. And so I read it, and I read it, and I read it, and I came to the conclusion that, for the most part, it conforms to the minister's guidelines. So there was nothing unusual, nothing that, as a lawyer, I would look at and say, well, that's not right. That doesn't line up with what the province is telling them to do. Very detailed. Again, I'm sure everyone's worked through it. And it talks about how to set up an accommodation review process, who's on the committee, what's the mandate of the committee, and the kinds of things that the board looks at when they're trying to decide to close a school. And then, of course, my job was to look at Appendix A, which is, how do you ask for a review of the accommodation review process? So that's what my letter goes to. And as some of the first speaker this evening mentioned, you need, first of all, you have to show why they didn't conform to their policy, but also, you need a petition. So you have to have, I think it is 30 percent of the students asking for it. So then I took a look at the process, because it's very much about the process. It seemed to me that they were able to establish, you know, and I didn't see anything to counter this, that there is a, there's an underutilization of the school facilities. I think the number is about 70 percent. And at 80 percent or less, that's when you can trigger one of these reviews. So my first review was to see whether or not they were even entitled to embark on this, and I was satisfied that, in fact, they were, that the numbers were such that they were entitled to have a look at this. And it sounds like, you know, it is a very serious problem for the board, however it came about. I think the first important date here was on May 1. They sent a letter, the board sent a letter to you, to the city, talking about a community planning and partnership meeting that was going to happen on June the 15. And the letter, the invitation, talks about discussing potential facility partnership opportunities and exchanging ideas about needs in the community. But there was no mention at all of school closings. And in my respectful submission, that's a bit unfortunate, because that was something you got on May 1 of 2015, give or take a year ago. And I think if that had been clearer, everybody, everybody in this room may have sort of begun participating in the process a little sooner. But that meeting came and went on June the 15, and later on, from looking at the chronology, we can see that, in fact, that's when they were starting to talk about it. So the first thing that happened, and my sense is, from looking at the record, that the municipality, you knew that this was coming. So now we're into October of 2015. And on October 13, this council, you passed a resolution saying to the school board that you needed them to delay this, that the accommodation review shouldn't start now, and you asked to meet with the director. But you didn't receive a reply for a couple of weeks, and the reply was basically, "We've started our process, and we're happy to invite you to a public meeting," which was, I think it was November the 18th, so late fall of 2015. That was their answer. "Well, we've started the process, and you're invited to a meeting on November the 18th," which was a public meeting. It was specifically invited to address to municipalities, but also other community groups. And as looking at the record, it looks like there were a lot of people at that meeting. It wasn't a sort of one-on-one with the director at all. And they also, in their response, said, "If you want to come and meet about something other than the accommodation review, call me." So you were pretty much relegated to being part of the other bodies that were going to participate in that. Then, the next thing that happened, I thought was significant, was on October 15, Mayor Body wrote to the Minister of Education, the Honorable Liz Sandals, and said, "We have a crisis in our community here. There is this accommodation review process that's underway, and we think it's, at best, premature, and we'd like you to intervene. We'd like some help." And the reply back some week or two later was basically, "Well, thank you for your letter. I'll just clarify how this works. There's an accommodation review process, and I understand you've been invited to a meeting." And that was pretty much all the assistance that you received from the minister. The, so it's sort of, I think that you got in the game as early as you could, once it became clear what was going on. And I think rightly so, tried to stop the process before it gathered steam, because as we've seen, once it got going, there wasn't much that could be done. The other important thing, I think, for the municipality to remember is that the county asked, on behalf of all its constituent municipalities, the director of planning to make a submission. So on December 2, Randy Scherzer, who is the county's director of planning and a very talented, smart, and top planner, he wrote a long submission, and I read Mr. Scherzer's submission. And he touched on all the things that I think everybody has been talking about here. This isn't just about money. It's not just about buildings. It's about our community, the social impact, the cultural impact. And it was a long letter, and he included a presentation that had been made. And my sense was, he was speaking for all the municipalities in the county. He was putting forward the arguments that I know everybody in this room is concerned about. How is this going to impact us as a community, as students? And it was a very, very well-written letter. He presented, I would say, the municipal case very well. And in his conclusion, he asked them to slow down. And he said, "I think we need some more time, because there hasn't been the kind of consultation. You haven't looked at these community impact and social impact issues that my community is facing." But from what I can gather, his submission fell on deaf ears. There was really no response to it. There was no, it had no impact on the process. Things just carried on. There was the first public meeting on December 3, and city center, city manager, but again, it was a large public meeting. And after that, there were several of the ARC Working Committee meetings, but as I understand it, delegations weren't really accepted there. They were working committee meetings. They were open to the public. And then by February 11, it was the final public meeting, and for all intents and purposes, the public process was over. So there were some reports that started coming. There was a preliminary final report. There was a special meeting of the board. There was a final report until April 19, when the trustees approved the final report. And we talked earlier about what they started proposing and what they ended up with is a bit different. And the initial, you know.
Is it the 141?
Yeah. Well, I saw that, that, you know, initially, it was going to be both high schools and 7 to 12. And that was how they were going to deal with the grade 7 and 8 accommodation issue. But, you know, we all know how it turned out. It didn't turn out that way. And I thought a lot about that, and I thought, if there's anything... I thought a lot about that. And I thought, if there's anything here in this process that I'm seeing, that's the problem. It was, you know, I'll just say, it was a bit of a bait and switch, maybe, that they show you the one, and then here's what you end up with. But, and I did think about that a lot, but it does seem to me that they've got a lot of discretion. And I think their argument would be, we had a lot of public input. The idea of consolidating everything at West Hill came from that public process. And so we were listening. Our objective was to accommodate 7 and 8s in one or the other of the high schools. We've done that. So I don't think that that's enough in terms of the process, enough of a flaw in the process that you could really, sort of, I'll say, sink your teeth into and make a real substantial change to the, to the process. I, I went through a checklist. I can just quickly go through it for the benefit of everybody here. I said, the process seems to have correctly applied the qualifying criteria in determining which schools may be recommended for an accommodation review. The initial staff report complies with the policy. It contained all the required information and the options that were supposed to address the accommodation issue. Within five days of the decision to undertake the review, they sent you an invitation. I think they sent it the next day, and invited you to the November 18th meeting, which they had to do. That was part of the guidelines. They had that meeting. There were two counselors, I think, there. And your city manager went to that. They met all the other notification qualifications and requirements. The committee itself was a large committee. It was, from what I could gather, properly constituted. It was given a proper mandate. And there was nothing I could see wrong about it. They held the two public meetings, December the 3rd and February the 11th. That's what they were required to do. And they did make provision for the public to have access to their information through the website. They received written submissions and presentations. So it was clear to me that the city, as soon as it really became clear what was happening, you took the steps that you needed to do, and went to both the board and to the province. And, you know, in, through resolutions and from, and from a letter from your worship, made the point that this is, this is not right. At a minimum, we need this to be delayed. And there was no, no real impact that they, the, the review continued on. And so I think that goes back to my opening remarks, that they really have complete jurisdiction here to, to set out the process and to, to decide what they want at the end of the day. So I regrettably came to the conclusion that a review would not be fruitful. It's not something that I could see being successful at the end of the day. And my understanding of that process is, the minister appoints a facilitator who would come and basically review the record, talk to people, and see whether or not they satisfied the sort of seven or eight things on the checklist that I just went through. And we've looked at other reviews, and the conclusion is that everything was done properly. And people have differences of opinion as to what should happen. But that, the process is what's, you know, important, and what the review is all about. And I, I just didn't see the kind of flaws in there.
Thank you. So specific questions for Mr. Elston before we get into any further discussion? Questions, Peter? Or Counselor Lemon?
Yeah. First of all, this does not preclude us from asking for a direct meeting with the minister. There's nothing in the process. And he has the right to, to slow it down. My question for you is, there has to be public input. It's required to be transparent. But there's no requirement for them to listen. I mean, in a way, I may have been stating the obvious, but this proposal that they finally ended up with bears no resemblance to what most of the public understood was going to happen. And I really, I agree that they followed the letter of the law, but I'm sure it was not the intent of the law.
I'll ask you to come to a question, Counselor Lemon.
Well, I...
It's a hot night, so I just want you to...
Yeah, I will be brief, as I can. My question for you is, has the minister, to your knowledge, ever overruled the Board of Education?
Through your worship, I don't know of that. Now, I haven't, I haven't done a, a full search, but my sense is that that doesn't happen very often.
Maybe this would be a good first time.
Thank you. Counselor Kepke?
Thank you, your worship. Can you tell me if the proper timing was followed by the board when the decision changed from a 7 to 12 in two schools to closing one, making it an elementary, and having only one high school?
Well, through your worship, I, I think they met the timing. I think they're allowed to make those kind of changes. I think the, the really unfortunate part is, they did that midway or near the end of the process. So you had a very tight timeframe to begin with. And I think what, my sense is, what became the real issue, and the real, the real problem for the community, happened very late, and just before sort of the cutoff.
Okay. Other questions specifically? Jim? Anyone? Okay, no other questions. Thank you, Mr. Elston. I think we'll have some discussion next.
You're very welcome, your worship.
Thanks. Others? Counselor Thomas?
Thanks, your worship. Thanks, Mr. Elston. I don't think that that was an opinion, really, probably, that surprised us. Certainly, in my experience over the years, Blue Water has always been very good at dotting the i's and crossing the t's. But following a policy does not make them morally correct in what they're doing. I just prepared a few notes, because it's when I go off-script, I really get myself into trouble. I did state last October to the trustees and staff of the Blue Water District School Board, when I appeared as a delegation without notice, that my opposition to their ARC process was not about the need to reduce underutilized classroom space. My opposition was to the board's accommodation review policy, which appears on the surface to promote community input, but does exactly the opposite. Outside of that, the policy adopted by Blue Water is based on a ministry document, which includes the minimum standards the province requires school boards to follow when undertaking a pupil accommodation review. The minimum standards. School accommodation reviews have never been easy in any community. But why, when it had the chance, could the Blue Water Board not have developed a process that exceeds the minimum standards and includes better opportunities for community input? Now, we've heard tonight that the board was able to follow these minimum standards. It's becoming a board of minimums, apparently. Now, see, I went off-script. But it, but it has trampled a number of its own policies in the rush to pass the only option that was presented to the board as a result of the accommodation review. You know, from the Community Planning and Partnerships guideline, which we heard referenced earlier, as a part of the planning process, when considering building a new school or undertaking a significant addition or renovation, boards are expected to notify the entities on their notification list one to three years prior to the start date. Well, that's not happened. Administrative Policy AP 3302-D, school openings, amalgamations, and closures. Item 5.2, item planning, yeah, item 5.2, planning. Under item 3, it says, it's important to note that school closures slash amalgamations can be very emotional for all school community stakeholders. It is key to establish a positive tone slash celebratory atmosphere in the school very early on. Well, it's true. Things can be emotional, especially when the individuals involved feel as though they have no voice in the process. And further, item 7.1, timelines for a new build slash amalgamation vary from project to project, but a general guideline is approximately 24 to 30 months from the time the project has received Ministry of Education approval to the move-in date. Now, there's certainly not 24 to 30 months till the next school year, and it's my understanding Ministry of Education approval has not been received. But again, we hear that many of the board policies are actually built on quicksand. So it's open to everybody's interpretation how those policies will be adhered to. And I think we're seeing that in action here at Owen Sound. So to the first point, announcing the closure of a school with 10 weeks left in the year doesn't really seem to follow the board's own policy. Students have been forced to tear up next year's course selections. And those who are supposed to be celebrating their best year in high school, the last one, are in a complete uproar. And the school community feels marginalized and ignored. I don't think that that atmosphere is positive or celebratory at OSCBI presently. The second point, 24 to 30 months, well, we don't even need to talk about that further. City Council has been flooded with emails, literally hundreds, over the past month. I have only seen four supporting the proposal, and they have all come from ARC committee members in the last 24 hours. Now, listen, I don't doubt that they worked hard, given the time constraints that they had, and thought that they made the best recommendation that they could. But there were a lot of recommendations that came forward to that ARC. And here's the thing, and I said it in October, the board accommodation review policy limits public input. It does not encourage it. This community is upset. Upset because it's been completely blindsided by the board's decision. I believe that people understand and accept that the board needs to deal with its surplus spaces. And I also believe there was general acceptance of the two high school, grade 7 to 12 scenario. What has this community upset is the feeling that we've been duped, duped by a process we were encouraged to trust, and duped by a decision that wasn't on anyone's radar. I recently read that trust, or the lack of it, is the crisis of our age. Without trust, institutions don't work, societies falter, and people lose faith in their leaders and their institutions. And I think we're seeing that at work here. Now, in closing, Mr. Elston observed that there's only so much a municipality can do in this case, and that is true. But Margaret Mead, the anthropologist, and I'm going to paraphrase here, I just read a quote from her that was so appropriate, suggested that there isn't much that a determined group of individuals can't achieve. And I would encourage you all to keep on with the fight, because somebody has got to hear our voices in Owen Sound. Thank you.
Given Mr. Elston's advice to us not to proceed, we've got Mr. Hendry that's looking for a facility. Do you want to make a motion now?
Yes, I'd like to move that, well, I don't know if we need to move, or if we just need to ask staff to provide us with a couple of dates and facilities that might be available, that we could make available to this group to hold a public meeting.
Carolyn, should I have a motion?
Need a motion? Okay, I'll make that a motion.
Yeah, I think it's a motion.
Your worship, I see Ms. Coulter making that note, so we will certainly get back to Mr. Hendry with some dates that may work for him.
Good. Now, Counselor Lemon, you had your hand up.
Yeah, if you want to vote on that.
Worship, do you want to vote on that motion first?
Yes, good thinking. All in favor? Yeah, that's carried. Thanks.
I just happen to have a motion as well. And that is that we send a letter requesting a meeting between representatives of this council, and I'd be pleased to be there, to discuss what's happened in Owen Sound. Because I think that if we keep making enough noise, I believe it was quite right with Margaret Mead, they will hear. But sometimes it takes a lot of noise. And so I believe it's necessary to have a meeting with the minister, because lots of luck getting, I was going to say something I shouldn't say, the school board to, to make or correct their mistake. I think we have to go to the minister.
Thank you. Counselor Thomas?
Could I just ask for a friendly amendment, that we ask for an urgent meeting with the minister?
I will accept it if you include the word "very urgent." So my motion is that we have a, we request a very urgent meeting with the minister to, to discuss this crisis.
Okay, discussion of that motion. Seeing none, all in favor. That is carried. Counselor McManaman?
Thank you, your worship. Before I even start, I just want to say, I want to acknowledge the speakers that went before me, because, boy, they're going to be, well, they're not, actually, they're going to be impossible to top. Mr. Hendry or Mitch, I, we've had a lot of deputations before our council over the years. That's about as good as it gets. So... If you're an indication of our future, our future's in good hands. So I just wanted to thank you. But also, Mr. Reeser, and actually Counselor Thomas, you both spoke, spoke very well. As, as you said, we've received hundreds of emails representing thousands of people over the last week, two weeks. In my time, we've never approached anything even close to this number, volume of messages. And as you just heard from Mr. Elston, legally, perhaps the board has met the letter of the law. There's absolutely no way they met the spirit of the law. And so... And there were so many comments poorly communicated. I think that's probably, there's so many questions out there. And the letters, the emails we've received, so many issues, you know, from students, from parents, from, you know, what are, what are they doing about this? What about that? And the answer is, we'll get back to you. Well, they have, what, 10 weeks? Eight weeks to get back to us, to let us know, to let everybody, not, not let us know, let you know what is supposed to take place. And again, nobody ever said at this council that we don't acknowledge that they've got some very pressing issues and that have to be addressed. All we've said is, what's the rush? Why, on March 4th, they went through a public consultation process. They did go through a public consultation process over many months. And at the end of it, they, they changed what the outcome was, and they would say that's listening to the public. I just don't know why. If this was a planning issue before the city, and we came out with, this is what the city's thinking of doing. And after months and months, they, the public said, what about this idea? What about closing OSCBI? Holy smoke, if it's not in the legislation, it sure should be, that you have to take that, then, that new item back out to the public. And what's the public think of that? And again, let's, let's not kid ourselves. We probably have two choices. One was either closing one of the schools, or was go to 7 to 12. Well, public, what do you think? And at the end of that, you know, if they, if they delayed it for a year for public input, truly on those two options, you know, whatever they came back with, if that's what the public wanted, then, you know, that's what the public wanted. So I, you know, that's about all I have to say, other than, again, as the mayor pointed out, this council, it would almost be impossible to respond to all the emails we've received. So if you don't hear back from us, know that we're with you in spirit. And, and that's it, your worship. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Wright?
Thank you very much. You know, I'm trying, I was trying to think of the year, but I think it was around 95 or 96. I was chair of the public school board. It was the Gray County School Board. We had an excellent school board, by the way. And the decision had to be made to, to do something with OSCBI, because it was, it was in very bad shape. And we needed to build a new school. And we, we had, we had a difficult time there, because that was the flagstone of the city. And there are a number of people sitting in this room that were part of that goings-on, when we had to take the school and tear it down, and sell the property, and build a new school. And we held public meetings. We held public meetings at the OSCBI, where we listened to the people. Not everybody was happy. We talked about the name of the school, what the school was going to be called. We did all those things. We even talked about how we were going to build the school. That discussion took place. And at the end, we built a beautiful school, built for teenagers, built for high school. And sorry, but I just shake my head. I cannot believe that they're going to take that beautiful school and turn it into an elementary school. I don't understand it. But that's their business. That isn't the council's business. That's the Board of Education's business. And that's what they seem that they want to do. I, I wanted to say a couple of things. I agree with certainly everything that's been said here. I want to speak to Peter. Peter, what you brought us is vitally important to this community. And I'm going to... Peter, what you brought us is vitally important to this community, and I'm going to ask, would you work with these young people? If they put an appeal in, would you work with them on the appeal so that your voice and the, and the presentation that you made about the value to this community and to all the business people in here is heard as well?
Of course.
Thank you. I appreciate that.[1244.21][1244.21](applause) I also want to thank our lawyer, because it was not an easy job for him to come and give us news that we really didn't want to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kepke?
Thank you, your worship. Thank you to the speakers tonight. Good job, and thank you also to those who've sent emails, whether they have been pro or con, council is really looking at them and listening. There's been a lot of comments criticizing council for not responding to the review. All of us may be to blame, including our board trustee, who it would have been appreciated if she had communicated the magnitude of the final decision to council, particularly since the final decision was a different proposal than initially presented. We have only one representative for Owen Sound on the school board, and this is difficult because we're the larger urban center here, and most of the schools are in Owen Sound. I agree that two options should have been placed before the community. I'd like to have the Blue Water District School Board communicate their vision, and hopefully that could help dispel some of the concerns that are being raised. If this merger is taking place as proposed by the school board, I have to congratulate the consolidation committee, Gene Stevenson, the supervisor of education for Owen Sound, the teachers of West Hill and OSCBI, for their proactive approach by holding a joint meeting that took place on April 22nd, which was a PD day. I'm certain one of the topics was rivalry between the two schools, as witnessed by some of the OSCBI students while picketing, who had timbits thrown at them by West Hill students, as they boasted about their school being the chosen one. This has been a very passionate issue, and I trust we will all move on eventually. How we get there for some will be more challenging than others.
Thank you. Others? Scott, go ahead.
Thank you, everybody. I just couldn't help but make a comment just on the actions of the board. And what I really found frustrating is, I watched the live stream that night, and the decision of this magnitude, it just made me so upset when I was watching it and the lack of professionalism that occurred, the game of slappies that, for anybody that was watching, that occurred between two trustees back and forth, and just so disappointed with their board, and absolutely, our community's been gobsmacked here. I mean, I was at the West Hill meeting, and there's, I guess that was January, perhaps. There's likely twice as many people in the chambers tonight as there was that night at the West Hill Auditorium, the second of the ARC meetings. I was at the OS one, too, but we've all been caught quite off-guard on this, and like councillor Kepke says, I guess I'm more infuriated at the board and the current structure and the changes that this scenario clearly highlights moving forward, because the process as it is right now is a complete failure.
Go ahead.
I'll be brief. I just want to mention that Mr. Elston said the last public meeting was February 11th. The first time they talked about the closing of the school was March 1st. He called it disappointing. I call it shady. Very important person, making a good point. And then Mr. Reeser, who is also very highly respected in our community, I just want to mention the last line in his presentation. "We believe that the Blue Water School, District School Board has not yet earned that trust. If I was on that board, I would be having a meeting with the man in the mirror." So you keep up the passion. If they've got a heartbeat, they have to be looking in the mirror, eventually. Thanks.
Quickly, Peter?
Hey, I just thought of something. Having gone past West Hill with the current number of students there, there's no parking.[1510.11][1510.11](laughter) We have jurisdiction over parking.[1514.47][1514.47](laughter)[1515.47][1515.47](applause)
I wouldn't be cheering too much. If you guys are stuck up there, it might be you that are missing the parking. If I can just wrap up, my parents went to OSCBI, my oldest brother went to OSCBI, he was a head boy there back in, I don't know what year. I was one of the blessed people. My brother David and I were blessed. We bleed blue. We went to West Hill, and, you know, you guys all know that West Hill's really the superior school, right?[1551.51][1551.51](laughter) Doing a little bit of research to go to China a few weeks ago, I started to look at it. I don't know the exact year, but Agnes MacPhail and Norman Bethune are born within a month of each other, and they're in the same grade 12 class at OSCBI. Bishop is in grade nine about the same time. The research has probably been done, but who's, who's the teacher that said, "You guys can go out and accomplish anything in the world"? When I was over in China, I started to get questions about OSCBI, and a couple reasons. The V, I'm blanking. Vocational, they're very much interested in doing an exchange in vocational. And the other thing was that Rita Guilford, that finished high school here, became a doctor here, went over there, she was set up hospitals, set up universities with her husband, children's hospitals, she's instrumental in the ending of binding of women's feet in China. She was there until 1991, 1891 to 1933. Four of her children are there, her grandchildren are there. They're in the region for 66 years. Owen Sound is twinned with Dai because of that connection. When I went over there, they knew what OSCBI was. Bethune's a national hero. Kilborn is a regional hero, and they would like to send students to OSCBI because it is a school of honor that has graduated great people, and it has status over there. I'm on the other side of the world. Who could have foreseen that? Especially a guy that went to West Hill.[1655.01][1655.01](laughter) So if, I hate to say this, but if we're not changing the school board's mind, your fight is not over. You need to protect that name. That name has to be protected. That's, that's important. If you've, if you've lost the first battle, we got to figure out, you got to go after the next battle. So plan ahead, think it through. We need to get the Board of Education onside of how they're going to protect. They're talking about that they'll protect the heritage. We need to know how. And I think that's so important, even from a guy from West Hill that painted the goalpost once blue at OSCBI, Victoria Park. Always had superior football teams, of course. Anyway, we want to thank everyone for coming, and thank you for your input.
Am I able to speak?
We don't have open meeting things, and because we kind of covered all the business that we possibly can, we prefer to move on, so.
Is there a sort of thing, or?
Sorry.
Nothing at all?
If I start with you, who else wants to speak?[1725.82][1725.82](laughter)
What if I have a solution?
Send it to the Board of Education.
You would have to.
We've, we've just got a legal opinion on what we can deal with, so I think we need to proceed as we are. Thanks, everyone, for coming. We're just going to pass a bylaw that confirms tonight's actions and then adjournments. Please, Mike, stick around, have a chat with people after. It's, we're not saying we're not listening, we're just not going to, we need to move on. So number seven is bylaw.
Yes, your worship. Moved by myself, second by councillor Kepke, the bylaw number 2016-049 be passed and enacted.
And to be clear, that just confirms all the proceedings that we've just done tonight. So all in favor? That is carried unanimously. That completes our business tonight, so we are adjourned. Feel free to, if you don't melt, to stick around and chat, and chat to councillors. And thank you.